All right, I'm gonna call the regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council to order Monday, July fourteenth at 5:30 PM for closed session. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Mayor Potem Santinez.
Here.
Councilmember Coops.
Here.
Councilmember Morse.
Here.
Mayor Dutton.
Here.
All right, Mr. Smoot, can you read into the record the closed items?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we actually have one item we'd like to add to closed session, and as a reminder, if the council would like to add this, it requires a four-fifth vote to add it. So we would make that item three B, I suppose. It'd be conference with real property negotiator with the address being nine zero three zero Somerset Boulevard and nine one zero eight Somerset Boulevard pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five six point eight. Agency negotiator would be myself with the negotiating party being LA Metro. And under negotiation would be price in terms of payment. We received information late last week, and we don't have another meeting coming up, your second meeting in July, so that's, hence the urgency with this item.
Does everybody know what dress that is? Okay.
Nine oh, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. So I assume there's no recusals.
So you need to make a motion to approve that?
I will need a motion, a second and a four-fifth vote to add that to the.
I'll make a motion to include that in our discussion.
Need a roll call vote or can I, without objection?
Roll call.
I think we need a roll call.
Okay. A motion on the floor by Councilmember Coops and a second by Mayor Potem Sunny Santa Inez. Call roll, please.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Aye.
Mayor Potem Santinez.
Aye.
Councilmember Coops.
Aye.
Councilmember Morse.
Aye.
Mayor Dutton.
Aye.
All right, is there any recusals of the other item? I don't think so. Well, negotiations. With that said, we're gonna recess to closed session. And there was no reportable action in our closed session. Roll calls, please.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Mayor Potem Santinez.
Present.
Councilmember Coops.
Here.
Councilmember Morse.
Here.
Mayor Dutton.
Here. Okay, everybody rise in invocation led by Dan Coops and the pledge allegiance to follow by Lynn Gurekki, our Assistant City Manager and Public Works Director.
Miss Bellflower, reward of prayer. Our gracious heavenly Father, we come to you this Monday evening to give you thanks. We're grateful for all the citizens that are here this evening and be with us as we deliberate the issues in front of us. We're always mindful of those that protect us, the fire and our sheriff departments. Keep them well, keep them safe so they keep us safe. We're always mindful of our homeless population in Bellflower. Bless them, keep them, and allow us to do the best we can to keep their lives better. In all this, we pray, in his name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Place your right hand over your heart, address the flag, and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item nine, city council announcements. I'll start. Summer fun continues with Bellflower Summer Street Fest here in July. July is packed with three more exciting Thursday night live music festivals and dancing and family-friendly entertainment. Here are the remaining concert lineups. July seventeenth, The Trip, which plays classic rock. July twenty-fourth, SOM, which is Latin. And July thirty-first will be the Eighties All-Stars, which is eighty-rock pop, of course. Summer Street Fest run from six thirty PM to nine thirty PM downtown on Bellflower Boulevard between Flower Street and Main Street. Bring a lawn chair and enjoy the festivities. Free parking is available in the nearby structures and also at City Hall or on Bellflower Boulevard, Main Streets. Do not miss out. Mayor Potem Sunny Santa Inez.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Mark your calendars for the upcoming Penny Carnival on Wednesday, July thirty, from eleven AM to one PM at Thompson Park located at one four zero zero one Bellflower Boulevard. Children ages three to ten are invited to bring their pennies and enjoy a fun-filled day packed with carnival-style games, face painting, money ring toss, and more. Kids will have a chance to win fun or tasty prizes at every booth. No registration is required. Just come ready to play and enjoy the festivities. This exciting community event promises to bring smiles, laughter, and lasting memories for the whole family. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Potem Santa Inez. Councilmember Dan Coops.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Parks and Recreation is hosting an adaptive recreation swim party on Friday, August first, from two PM to four PM. And that'll be at the Bellflower Aquatic Center located at one four zero zero one Bellflower Boulevard. All adaptive participants are welcome to join in in a fun swim party with their families. Participants will enjoy water fun and games in the pool before sharing a family picnic. The party is free, but pre-registration is required so they know who to expect. For more information, please call five six two eight oh four one four two four, extension two two six one. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Coops. Councilmember Wendy Morris.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Bellflower. Join us on Tuesday, August fifth, twenty twenty-five for a fun-filled summer movie night under the stars at Thompson Park, located at one four zero zero one Bellflower Boulevard. Enjoy an outdoor screening of Dogman with family and friends. Just bring your picnic, lawn chairs, and blankets to settle in for a cozy evening. Guests are welcome to arrive starting at six PM to enjoy a variety of family-friendly activities, including games and the chance to meet local law enforcement and fire personnel. The movie will begin after sunset around eight PM. Admission is free and onsite parking is available. Please note that alcohol is not permitted, and we kindly ask that you leave pets at home. For more information, please call five six two nine two five zero one two four. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Morris. Councilmember Victor Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Bellflower. Join the Bellflower Chamber of Commerce for their monthly morning mingle on Tuesday, July twenty-nine, from nine AM to ten AM at the Chamber Office Conference Room located at one six seven three zero Bellflower Boulevard. Come enjoy coffee, pastries, and friendly conversations while networking with local businesses and neighbors. Don't miss this wonderful opportunity to connect, collaborate, and stay involved in the Bellflower community. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Sanchez. All right, item ten is public comments. Mr. Smoot.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the time set aside for the public to address the city council on matters not listed on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the city council should come to the podium, be recognized by the mayor, and state your name for the record. If you wish to address the city council on an agenda item, you may do so by approaching the podium as we review that particular item, and you'll be given three minutes to address the city council.
All right, this is the time, if anybody wants to come up and talk to us about anything that's not on the agenda here tonight, you're welcome to come up to the podium right now and sign in and give us your time. Yeah, come on up. Just sign in and state your name, and then take her away.
Good evening, I'm Ed Gutierrez. I've been wanting to come to these meetings for many years. I have a, there's a tree in front of my house that was planted by the city many years ago, and I've been struggling because it has these seeds that it drops, quite a bit of them. I have pictures to show you guys. And, you know, I've been like struggling, like I said, with my properties getting damaged, my driveway, my cars. And I also see people struggling. I'm not getting any younger. I'm already, I might look young, but I'm sixty, so it's really taking a toll on me now, you know, like raking those seeds off my yard. It takes, it takes a lot of effort now. And I was wondering if, you know, if you guys can look into it to see if possibly you guys can help me there, take that tree out of the city property or at least trim it down quite a bit. It's already lifting up the sidewalk as well, so I've made several calls already in the past. In fact, I called Public Works, and I almost feel like they actually laughed at me, like, yeah, we're not gonna do anything about it. I mean, although they have gone, the last couple of times that I called when the, I told them that the sidewalk was lifting up, so they did do some shaving.
Smoothed over, shaved it.
Yeah, but now it's already starting to make my grass, you know, look all dry. And I, I used to feel so good about my property, now I don't. I feel like I just live in a dump. So if anything that you guys can do, I would greatly appreciate it.
Have, did they, anybody say that you were on a list at all for removal or any reason or?
No.
No, they just?
No, they just, I got a call back from Public Works saying that the tree was a really nice tree and that it was gonna stay. This was many years, and I've called several times, and so that's why I decided to make the effort this time to come out and address.
What's your address?
Nine three three two Flower Street.
Flower. I think I was gonna ask Brian to get his, mind if I get Brian to get his information, Lynn? You have it? Yeah, Flower, okay. What's your name?
Ed, Ed Gutierrez.
Ed Gutierrez, right?
Yes.
Need a phone number or anything? Okay. You're not gonna do a Nordock? He's in the system? Okay. Okay, somebody will double-check it and reach out to you.
You know, I also feel bad for, there's also a lot of people walk through the, through my sidewalk. Yeah, and I see them struggle. I actually have a video of an older lady that was struggling to get through because of the seeds. She was almost falling too, and I took the video on purpose, you know, because I was doing my yard work at the time. So I have it in case you guys wanna see it. It's pretty bad.
We don't have time tonight, but I mean, you can probably share it with the Public Works.
Okay.
Guy that comes out and talks to you, okay?
Thank you so much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ed. All right. Anybody else wishing to come forward? All right, not seeing any. Item eleven A is a consideration of possible action to conduct a public hearing to consider delinquent refuge service charges and adopt Resolution twenty-five dash twenty-seven dash A, a resolution ordering delinquent refuge surcharges to be assessed against the property owners in the properties and such charges being transferred to the county tax rolls. All right, Lynn, you taking this one?
Actually, Melanie Vaz, our management analyst too, who's, works with CRNR for On Behalf of Public Works, will be doing the presentation this evening.
All right. Melody, thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor.
Let's get started.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. I'm here to discuss the twenty twenty-five delinquent refuge for the city. I'd like to give you with, I'd like to start with a little background on this. CRNR provides solid waste and recycling services to the city. CRNR bills customers directly for their services. Refuge charges become delinquent if not paid within thirty days. Bellflower Municipal Code defines procedures for collecting the delinquent refuge service charges, and the city retains ten percent of the delinquent amount. A timeline for this year would be the list of delinquencies was delivered to us by CRNR on May thirty-first. CRNR noticed its delinquent customers on June twelfth. An additional notice by the city sent, was sent out to the property owners on June twenty-third. A notice of public hearing was issued on June thirteenth and July fourth. The public hearing is tonight, July fourteenth. The last day for payment is July twenty-fourth, and the final list will be sent to the county on August tenth. Here's a chart comparing, here's a chart comparing the delinquent charges from this year to last year. As of May thirty-first this year, we have nine hundred and thirty-two delinquent accounts for a total of two hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and sixty-four hundred. As of July first this year, it did dwindle down a bit to five hundred and fifty for a total amount of a hundred and seventy-nine, two hundred and twenty-one dollars. As of today, we don't have that yet, we don't have it listed, but we have three hundred and ninety-five accounts. So I just wanted to show you the difference in that. The recommendation to the city council is to open the public hearing, take testimonial and documentary evidence. After considering the evidence, adopt Resolution twenty-five twenty-seven, or alternatively discuss and take other action related to this item.
Thank you, Melody. Any questions to staff at this time, colleagues? No, we've been down this road before once or twice, haven't we? All right, I entertain a motion to open a public hearing.
I'll make a motion to open a public hearing.
Second. Got a motion on the floor by Mayor Potem and a second by Councilmember Coops. Without objection, that'll be the order. All right, anybody in the audience wishing to come forward at this time on this item? Just first come, first served, and just gotta sign in, state your name, and let's hear you.
Good evening, councilmembers, Mayor, Mayor Potem. Appreciate the time. My name is Mark Lucas. I own the property at one four five zero nine Syble Avenue, S Y B L E, through a trust. It was the house I grew up in and the house my parents lived in until they both passed away. My father two years ago, sadly. I received notice on June twen, the letter from the city of Bellflower on June twenty-third regarding account number nine five two eight three six eight for my address. I received a copy of the bill from CRNR after speaking to a representative from CRNR, and the bill is charged to a woman, I assume it's a woman, person named Monisha James. I do not know who that person is. I have a copy of the lease. There are three people on the lease, and Monisha James is not on that lease. I do not know who that is. That person is not a tenant of mine, has never been a tenant of mine. So I don't understand how they got the account to begin with or why it would be on the hook, particularly since they're not a tenant. I'd appreciate the council.
Has that property been getting trash service all year, do you know?
There was a tenant. The tenant was.
In your lease, lease documents, does it say that the tenant's in charge of the trash?
Yes, that the tenant's in charge of all of the, all of the utilities. So again, it would, I, in this particular case, I'm a little flunked because I don't understand how a non-resident could get access to that and encumber my property.
And you've talked to CRNR already, tried to?
I did.
And what was the resolution there?
The, the request was for me to come here to the city council meeting and discuss it with the city council.
Gotcha. Good enough. All right. There, I know there's a representative here for CRNR, so we can, you can actually go meet with that person that's here if you want.
Yeah, happy to do that.
I have a question.
You have a question?
Mr. Lucas, did you talk to your tenant and ask them if they know this person?
The, the tenants who are in the units during the time that the, that the bill references became delinquent after three months, and we had to go through eviction procedures during that time. So I never, I, I had, well, the account was under my father's name during his lifetime and had to transfer to my name until we had the tenants that I, I removed my name and, and have a separate account number under my name with CRNR. And I never reestablished it, so I never made any assumptions regarding trash. And during the interregnum between when we had the old tenant, excuse me, when, when the old tenant left after the eviction procedures and when we had a new tenant take over, I assumed that there wasn't trash. We never brought the trash down. The neighbors didn't bring the trash down. I spoke to them. So I, we made no assumptions about the trash and didn't make use of the trash services directly. So I would have no reason to believe that, that the trash was active at the time.
So the tenant, you say you had three tenants?
So, sorry, Mayor Potem, to answer your question directly, no, I did not speak to the tenant because the tenants left before we had any communication about that as part of the eviction procedures.
Okay, okay. Got it. All right, thank you.
Yes.
Okay.
Any consideration the city can provide to remove that bill would be much appreciated. So happy to have any conversations.
Yeah, we need to see what the, this is a kind of a different one. Do you wanna weigh, weigh in?
It's probably better that Crystal weighs in. Just ask, have her come up to the podium and I, personally, I haven't gone through a situation like this here either with these. She might, she may have seen it in another one of her jurisdictions. I don't know.
Why don't we get through some more of the public hearing?
Okay.
Because Crystal will be out in the hall and she'll back and forth. All right, Mr. Ed just says, go ahead and sit down and, and we'll get, Crystal's already noted your complaint, and we'll get, have a little huddle up later. Anyone else in the audience need to talk about this issue? Only one?
Wow.
That's a first.
Move to close the public here a second.
Okay. Been doing this a long time.
Crystal, you have an easy job tonight.
Okay, so we got a motion by Coops and a second by Mayor Potem. Without objection, that'll be the order. As you can tell, we're all shocked here. Usually, there's over an hour of this.
Are you ready for a motion?
Yeah, we're ready for a motion and.
I would move that we adopt Resolution number twenty-five dash twenty-seven, a resolution ordering delinquent refuge service charges be assessed against the property owners and properties, and such charges be transferred to the county tax rolls.
I'll second, but do you want to have Crystal comment first?
Yeah, Crystal, you wanna make a comment up here at the podium regarding that? There, or let it go, or we can?
No, you can.
No, because you're the CRNR.
Crystal Dunning with CRNR.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor, honorable council members. I'm just, I am familiar with the property and the question that came up. When someone calls in to schedule service with us, there's no way for us to know whether that's the exact tenant that appears on a lease or not. And timing on, as the resident explained, the owner explained, aligns with what we have in our system when someone moved out and someone moved in, and that's all we had record of. So we followed our procedures in terms of establishing the account, establishing service, and service has been provided. So we didn't see any reason to be able to remove them from the, from the tax roll.
Gotcha. And are your franchise agreement with the city of Bellflower, and this is the process that we have, is to chase debt? Okay? So everybody knows that's what we do.
Yeah, and I know this comes up. We usually have a few more questions every year about this where what happens when it's a tenant situation? You know, who's responsible? We don't know whether who's responsible for the services or not, whether it's the owner or the tenant, but if someone's calling in that says they're there, living at the property to schedule services, that's what we set up.
Yeah, it sounds like it was a short year of bills that's delinquent too.
About a year, yeah. A little bit less than a year, yeah.
Okay, well, well, thank you.
And I'm happy to talk to the owner as well afterwards. Absolutely.
Ed Contreras.
Thank you.
Oh, Lucas, Mark Lucas, I'm sorry, got my names mixed up.
Mr. Mayor, I have a comment, if I may.
Yes.
Comment or suggestion or?
Mr. Sanchez, go.
You know, like a, I'm gonna take a moment, like a Dropbox. First of all, I just wanna say thank you, Crystal, and thanks, CRNR, for the work you guys are doing. Appreciate you guys. You guys are always on top of it. Your customer service line is too. But hearing that we kinda get the same, a similar, you know, complaint almost every year, would there be a way, and this is an idea in a just suggestion box, you know, kind of a thing, take it or leave it, but would there be a way for CRNR to set up a, kinda like a authentication process for property owners? Where property owners could call and say, this is, you know, I'm the property owner, here's my copy of my, my trust or my deed, title, my title report, whatever. If anyone wants to establish a service, you know, have them, have myself be reached at this number to verify that they are who they are? Just food for thought in the future.
Usually in this type of scenario, it's usually a tenant that's moved in.
Sure.
So, and we're not gonna be privy to the information between the tenant and the homeowner on what their leasing arrangements are. But to that suggestion, I have talked with our customer service team about what we can do if someone calls in and says they are a tenant, how we can have that flagged in our system. So we can have very clear notices sent out to the property owner to make sure if it's someone that's new, that's not familiar with this process, that they are notified that, hey, this is a tenant that's called in to set up services and to make you aware that if they become delinquent, this would be going, this could potentially go into your tax roll.
So that's something you have in place already?
So we're working on getting that set up. We have the ability to be able to have an indicator in our system, so I was just looking through that process in preparation for tonight to see if we have a way to be able to flag to know whether the name on that account, if it's the tenant or the owner.
Well, that's cool. That's a good update to the CRM system.
Because I, because this comes up, you know, we usually have a few every year. I'm like, okay, what can we do to help? At least make sure that, you know, everyone has a clear understanding of what this process is, specifically if it's a, you know, a newer tenant-owner situation where maybe they haven't had tenants before, and now it's become a rental property.
Very good. Well, appreciate that update.
I could add something to that, too. It'd be cumbersome, but we have like ten thousand rentals at least in Bellflower. So each rental is supposed to have a business license. So we have business license, and we know who the property owners are if they're paying the business license.
I would be, that would be very helpful.
And I bet we could catch some business license people that way, too, if they don't have a business license.
That's a helpful suggestion. Thank you.
I do have one question, question, Crystal. If a tenant is required to maintain the trash service, do they have to bring a lease or anything to you guys when they establish the service to say that?
No, we just identify who they are, and they've identified that they're the responsible, yeah.
Okay.
But leasing, no, we don't specifically ask for a copy of their lease. Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I think we're getting way complicated. When I have a property that I lease, I tell them, I'll go and pay the trash bill. And you add it to the rent, and you know it gets paid, and you know it's your responsibility, and there's no deviation from that.
Right, and I do the same.
Right, and it's the same fifty-six or whatever it is. It's not like water where it's gonna have a difference of amount, so you can count on it, but just put it in the rent, and you pay it because you're gonna pay it one way or another.
I have a question for Crystal.
Go ahead.
How many months has the account been delinquent, do you know?
For which?
This particular account?
I, I don't have the exact date in front of me, but approximately.
Because I'm curious, because a long outstanding delinquency, there's something wrong with the process, you know?
No, this is not a longstanding delinquency.
Maybe about a couple of months?
About a little less than a year. If I, if I were to look at my records, I think it's approximately a year.
All right, well, thank you. Yeah, we only got one of them. Yeah, come on up. Do I gotta, yeah, yeah. Or, did you wanna make a comment to us, or I gotta open the public hearing? One, just a minute. I'll make a motion to reopen the public hearing. Anybody wanna hear that? Okay, without objection, that's the order. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I just wanna confirm, I, if this was one of my tenants and to Councilmember Coops' comments and Councilmember Sanchez's comments, I certainly appreciate that if this was one of my tenants, I'd be on the hook for this. But if the suggestion is that any person could make an encumbrance on any of our properties, then that's an interesting comment for anybody to make because I don't know who this person is. None of us know whether this person was an actual resident, illegal or not, in my property. And if there's a precedent that's going to be set regarding owners of properties being on the hook for, for utilities or anything else that we, we don't know about, there's no way to know about, then that's a,
It's interminable.
That's a noteworthy, interesting comment that I'd hate for, I don't think the precedent is something that, that I would wanna be set, and I'd be surprised if other people within the city would want it to be set. So that, again, if this were a tenant of mine, I'd have a different comment, and I would've just sucked it up. But it's, it's very odd that a complete stranger might be able to put this amount of money on my property and then, unknown to me, have me be responsible for it. So I realize that this happens from time to time or every, every year with regards to tenants, but I know that there are comments already made by city council members and, and even on the phone that this is the first time that, that you've heard something where a non-owner, non-tenant has filed this. Thank you for the time.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Without objection, that'll be the order. What's your flavor, guys?
I made a motion to approve the.
Oh, that's right. Okay.
Ready for a vote?
Yeah, ready for a vote. Got a motion on the floor by Councilmember Coops, second by Mayor Potem. Call roll, please.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Aye.
Mayor Potem Santinez.
Aye.
Councilmember Coops.
Aye.
Councilmember Morse.
Councilmember Morse?
Aye.
Mayor Dutton?
Aye.
Item thirteen A, Mr. Smoot.
Where am I? Consideration of possible action to adopt resolution number twenty-five twenty-eight, a resolution to record a notice of special assessment for nuisance abatement against the property owner at one-three-eight-two-five Charlemagne Avenue in Bellflower, nine oh seven oh six. Ed Solange is here to take this item, I believe.
Yes, hello, good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. Today I'm presenting for resolution twenty-five twenty-eight to record a notice of special assessment for nuisance abatement against the property. This is thirteen eight-two-five Charlemagne Avenue. You may remember this address, we've previously successfully abated nuisances on this property and collected for the abatement related expenses. This is for a second abatement that we did soon after the first. Kind of the history of enforcement we have started back in October of two thousand and twenty-three. We had sent the property owner at the time, a warning and notice of violation. To preface, the property owner is Marilyn Schneider and we found out that she had actually passed away in two thousand and twenty-three. So part of the delay in all of this is because the property is in probate court. By March twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-four, the city had received complaints about the property and trespassers. One of the trespassers was likely the grandson to Marilyn Schneider. And started fires in the property, in the home, and would continue to trespass within it. Hence why we had so many complaints received by code enforcement and even calls to PD regarding trespass. By April one, two thousand and twenty-four, we had sent a notice of public nuisance and urgency abatement. And in April, two thousand and twenty-four, we also red-tagged the building and conducted our first abatement. By September, two thousand and twenty-four, there were still ongoing violations, even post-abatement. Essentially, the property had ongoing issues related to vegetation and securing of the property, continued trespassing. So that September twenty-three notice was in part a demand for the costs related to that first abatement and also a notice regarding ongoing violations. After receiving no response from property ownership, on October third, we executed the abatement warrant. Again, this was to cover up graffiti, to resecure the property and to cut overgrown vegetation. Then recouping for those costs, we sent a demand letter June thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five with those costs. As I mentioned before, property ownership was Marilyn Schneider. And since, since about a year ago, Larry Schneider has been appointed administrator of the estate. The minute order prescribing him as the administrator of the estate was provided as supplemental materials today. We have sent notices to all the individuals listed, including the general contractor, the probate referee and the public adjuster. As well as the owner and his legal counsel. Unfortunately, the only people we've been able to actually reach, who have actually responded to us are the public adjuster and the general contractor. However, the owner himself, the administrator of the estate, has never reached back out to the city. These are photos from before and after abatement. As mentioned previously, we had conducted the abatement in part to deal with the overgrown vegetation at the front of the home. In addition, it was to cover up graffiti around the home. And it was to secure the property. We had noticed that the back door was persistently open. So as you can see also, this is, these are, I'm unfamiliar with the correct terminology, but the wood essentially that's pried open in the before picture was part of the abatement we had done a month or two prior. And so obviously trespassers were able to get back into the property, hence why we pursued a second abatement to resecure the property. As you can also see, there's significant burns within the property. Those are from the fires that were, that happened on a few occasions over the last five years. At this point, the general contractor had submitted a construction permit application to the city in April of this year. So that is good progress. It was supposed to say two thousand and twenty-five, apologies for that discrepancy. So the HP associate submitted a permit application in April. The city got back to them with comments in June. And so now we're just waiting for them to make the corrections that the city asked for. I spoke with the contractor today and it seems like they're making good progress. I'm actually confident that they will remediate the property and actually do a decent job. They're pretty responsive, which I appreciate. So the application is currently on the second round of review. And there is no active construction yet at the property, but also no reports of trespassing still. And no other reports of unauthorized entry at the property. And that concludes my presentation, any questions?
Any questions?
I have a question.
I know we do.
Yeah. Could you put that last picture back up?
Yes.
Why haven't we cleaned up the parkway? We did everything else.
So this was actually, this picture was taken today. We had cleaned up the parkway back in October, but if we want to clean up the parkway again, we can, we would just pursue another warrant to do so.
Well, that didn't happen overnight. I mean, that's been that way quite some time.
Oh, certainly, right. We, the last time we abated the property and the nuisances at the property was October third.
So in order to get us to be, the city would have to do this work, that we would have to amend or start over with what we're dealing with tonight? Because we'd have a additional charge on this?
This would be, unless there's something different in it being beyond the line of the fence, I'm not sure if the city attorney can speak to that. But if this is considered the property line, I believe we would have to pursue another abatement warrant.
I think we need to address our policy. I know what you're getting, Dan.
Well, you know, for heaven's sakes.
Ten minutes, six months ago.
We need her in ten minutes, you got a lot of work done.
But anyway, that's something else.
All right, that's all, that's my question.
We need to give council policy directions somehow.
All right. That's all I have.
Mayor, I have questions.
Go ahead.
Yeah, can you go back to your timeline?
Yes.
All right, on the first abatement, April twenty, two thousand and twenty-four. Did the property owner pay the, the cost of the abatement?
They did, actually it was the general contractor that came to the city and paid a check. I think at that point, insurance said they would cover the cost. However, when I spoke with the public adjuster most recently, maybe two weeks ago, he had said that insurance was not going to cover the cost of this second abatement.
That's why they haven't paid yet?
Correct.
Okay, so if we look at the timeline, October twenty twenty-four to June twenty twenty-five.
Coming up on three years.
So that's more than six months. Why is it taking so long for us to collect, try to collect the, the money?
Part of it was because we weren't sure if we were going to need to go in again to abate. And at that point, we would wait because ultimately, if we're going to go into a bait, we'd just collect demand at the same time for both the second and the third abatement. And so we had seen some strides by the general contractor, hence why we delayed. Then they submitted their application in April. But we also were monitoring the property and saw that not much progress was being made. We know it can be slow to submit plans and, and kind of get things back into shape. But we decided that they were showing good faith, yet they still needed to pay the cost of the second abatement, hence why we pursued those costs after they had submitted the application.
Yeah, but if you look at the history of this property, it doesn't look promising that the owner is going to be doing his job.
That's, I would agree with that. I think the owner is lackadaisical, to say the least. However, the general contractor and the public adjuster have been especially responsive and this is a matter that's in probate court. So I would assume the owner, the legal representative to the estate, is at least being responsive to the probate court. Also not acknowledged in this timeline, we had sent around the same time of the September, two thousand and twenty-four notice, we had sent a letter to the probate court informing them of the abatement previously occurring, the kind of history of enforcement at the property and also notifying them that we, that we intended to pursue another abatement. And we didn't receive a response. But we know that they are aware of the ongoing issues at the property. I think probate court is just moving at its own pace and we're kind of, you know, working alongside the general contractor, but also taking their promises of good faith.
So, so I think that we need to accelerate our process. Seems like they're basically just ignoring the, the abatement warrant, the demand letter, all this kind of stuff.
I think, I think also at the, the second abatement, the general contractor had implied that they would go in to fix up the property. And we were more expedient the second time around. There was only a two-week, three-week timeline difference between the notice going out and the actual execution of the abatement warrant. And it was the, the hope that they would continue forward with pursuing remediation of the property that made us wait until later on to see if we needed to pursue a third abatement. But I do hear you, I do hear you.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
How long has the general contractor been involved at this point? Are you aware?
At least a year.
So we're two months away of being three years on this project, right? At what point do we go, go to court and get it abated with a bulldozer? We've done that and we're kind of getting good at that. I feel sorry, so much sorry for those neighbors that have to live next to this.
Yes.
We're not doing our job as a city of Bellflower, is what I look at.
We, I think there may be a little more nuance, given the fact that it has been in probate court. Because part of the delay in this was also establishing new ownership. And I'm sure we could consider potentially going in and demoing. I think potentially it's a harder argument to make, given they submitted an application to fix up the property and are going through the steps that they need to take to do it themselves.
In the last year.
Correct.
Two years in, Mr. Attorney, two years, two years, a year ago, couldn't we have probably taken this to court with these, you know, there's fires inside? We keep boarding it up and they keep breaking in?
We can certainly take direction from the council and be more aggressive on things. I think historically, for many of the residential properties, we have been much more reactive and attempted to assist with those properties, much more than commercial properties, for example. So to your point about bringing in bulldozers, the commercial properties, we've brought in bulldozers. We haven't done that with residential properties simply because they are residences.
I just can't imagine me living next door to this. I'm sure one of us up here can imagine that.
You'll recall.
I'm not saying it's anyone's fault, but, and this is like, now it's got to this, this bad and we're hearing about it?
So that's certainly something we can add to the list of things to bring to the city council, get it specific direction on.
Maybe we need to explore that in the future and take this as a learning lesson.
You, you'll recall that, I forget what the property address was, but it was the hoarder property that we actually was completely rehabilitated after a receivership was appointed and was actually sold off and it was, I think you guys took a tour of it, it was probably completed last year.
But.
Yeah, Belmont Street.
Right.
But that took, that still took three years.
Yeah, but I can see this coming at a probate and the contractor not getting paid, he leaves. I can see this going on and then we end up putting in receivership two years later. I can, I can visualize it. And it's basically from learning on the dais up here, we see these, they just, there's certain people that do this. And you do not, you know, clean stuff up or don't, they can't follow the, the rules and leave blight in our city, but.
So it's certainly something that the city manager and I can bring to you in terms of, in the past, we brought sort of the, the top ten list, if you will, of, of worst offenders within the city and tried to whittle down that particular list. And so we can certainly come back to you with something like that to get direction in terms of what you would like to do with that.
But we're here tonight for this, so I have a question. The contractor, do we know the contractor actually has a, a contract? And I think you said something about permits, he's pulled permits?
A construction permit.
Just a construction permit for a remodel?
Yes.
A very minor?
I have only seen the construction permit application. I haven't seen the back and forth between building. And it seems to be a rehabilitation and a pretty significant one, but it's not a demo.
Yeah, definitely not a demo, I would say, yeah, but there's, I'm sure it's a construction permit that's going to require plumbing, electrical, heating and air, I'm sure has all.
Roofing.
Roofing.
Roof has gone too, so it's, it's, it's a permit with a lot of things on it. That's been pulled, I imagine to do that, you'd have to have some kind of a plans and, and this contractor, was it hired by the new owner that the probate says that, who the owner is?
I think they may have been appointed by.
So it's appointed by the probate court?
Yes.
Another layer.
Yes.
Well, we're here tonight just for the lean portion of this and I think we need to protect our money, but it just, as you can see, this, this thing's been going on a while and, and I feel sorry for who else that live next door to it or on that street. But that's, that's life. Thank you, great presentation. Any other questions? Ladies and gentlemen?
No.
Do you want to take public comment?
Yeah, yeah, does anybody in the audience want to talk on this? You've heard what we feel. There's nobody lives on that street wants to come up and yell at us? Good. All right.
All right.
Anybody want to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for the city council of Bellflower to adopt resolution twenty-five dash twenty-eight to record a notice of special assessment for nuisance abatement on the owner of one-three-eight-two-five Charlemagne Avenue.
A second.
Sorry.
All right, a motion on the floor by Mayor Protim Santinas and a second by Councilmember Sanchez.
Oh, I'm fine.
It's a tie.
I'm on good.
I heard Sanchez first, so. Roll, please.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Santinas?
Aye.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Councilmember Morse?
Aye.
Mayor Dutton?
Aye.
All right, we're down to the consent calendar, on the home stretch.
No, thirteen B.
Always B, missed it? Glad, I'm glad I got you guys. Jeez. Mr. Smoot, you want to read into the record thirteen B?
Thank you, sir. Thirteen B is consideration of possible action to authorize the city manager to execute agreement file number one-zero-nine-seven in a form approved by the city attorney with Sound Thinking Incorporated to implement ShotSpotter and Plate Ranger system to enhance public safety. And I believe Brian is here to make this presentation with some representatives from the company as well.
Thank you, Mr. Smoot. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, this evening, it's my pleasure to present a, a presentation with our, some representatives from Sound Thinking Incorporated. They're here to give an explanation on a couple of different technologies which we're looking to implement, one of which being ShotSpotter, second of which being our Plate Ranger system. So just a quick backstory, I don't want to take too much time before Jamie here gets started with his presentation, but back in January of this year, if you recall, I presented a public safety assessment to the city council, which offered a variety of improvements we could incorporate into our public safety program. Technology was one of those elements which we identified. Technology was one of those elements which we identified that we could, that we could improve and really seek out improvements in benefiting our public safety program. And tonight is sort of the first domino to fall from that, and that's what we're bringing back to the city council for consideration. So I won't take too much more of the time here, so I'll flip it over to Jamie for his presentation.
Brian, thank you.
Thank you, Jamie.
And this evening, distinguished members of the council and your honorable mayor and those of the community, I'd like to thank you for inviting us to present. I do want to first acknowledge two folks that are here with me, myself. I'm the senior director of our technology and solutions. For those of you that aren't aware of who Sound Thinking is, formerly ShotSpotter, myself and Rich Reyes. We are both former police officers, Rich out of Colorado, myself out of Maryland. And so we're familiar with using this technology around our agencies. To give you a bit of a backdrop, I like to educate you guys on the beginnings of ShotSpotter and how we've continued to bring technology and innovation to the industry to support law enforcement agencies. And a number of those technologies that you see, gunshot detection began back in 1996. And it's continued to evolve into a set of products to help as what we call force multiplier with your agencies, help augment the staff and sometimes the lack of resources that you have from time to time with technologies such as gunshot detection. But other things, CopLink is a very familiar solution here in the Southern California region. It's been rebranded and renamed as Crime Tracer. It's an investigative tool that a lot of the law enforcement agencies in the region have access to, all the way up to new technology, which is leveraging AI, and that's Plate Ranger. So we can start to use licensed plate reader technology to identify those vehicles that are involved in crimes. And bringing all of that together is to really provide you with a better technology and solution to assist your law enforcement officers. But tonight, I'd like to begin with a story, and I think this will resonate with a large number of folks that may be here in the room, as well as the council members. Tonight in your city, it's quite possible that during that time, there may be a gun fired within the community. And what we'll see, and what your constituents expect, is to look out their window, and they're expecting to see a police car. The problem is, what our customers tell us about those shootings and the statistics and the data that we have, 80% of that gunfire goes unreported. We find in communities, you may see some of the footnotes down there from the Brookings Institute, 12% of gunfire in Washington DC does not ever have a correlated 911 call, or 12% does, so we're getting close to 90%. It's pretty hard to make decisions and be able to address violent crime when we're dealing with only 10% of the information. A little unique, I think this poll was pretty interesting out of Portland State University. They polled the community and simply asked them, if you heard gunfire, would you call 911? Only 9.3% of those surveyed said they would. Now, there's a lot of reasons behind that, but imagine if you were only trying to make do with at best 20% of the shooting information. And the simple reasons are recognition, I'm not sure whether that was gunfire or not. Redundancy, there's always gunfire. I'm not going to call 911, nothing ever happens. Retaliation and the fear of retaliation is important. And then just resignation. Even if any of this happens, nothing ever occurs. There's no result. Retaliation's a big thing. Even if I do call 911, where's the sheriff's deputy going to go? To the person's address who called 911, not to where the shots occurred. So the question for you and the community is, what can we do about it? And this is where ShotSpotter comes in. It's part of a comprehensive, precise approach to identifying and addressing gun violence. It's not the only solution. But it's part of a more comprehensive solution, where what we do is we replace around the community, on top of your light poles, on top of buildings, sensors that are above ground level. They're not detecting ambient conversation. It's intended to only detect the gunfire. But when that gunfire happens, a number of things occur. First of all, we're going to send that information to our AI machine learning in the cloud. That information is also then reviewed by an independent party, essentially our 911 center. We refer to it as our IRC. And within 60 seconds, we're identifying whether it's gunfire, sending it to officers in the field, and then also publishing it out to your real-time crime center, as well as your dispatch. Now, I'll let you hear. And this was a gunshot that just happened several moments ago in Pittsburgh. I monitor Pittsburgh because I'm from the East Coast. But this allows the responding officers, could be council members if they so desire, if there's a major shooting, that you would be able to see and hear where those shots fired calls are occurring. The biggest piece here is that we guarantee that within 90 feet, we're going to show where those shots occurred, and we're able to now more effectively provide trauma response, as well as recover evidence. Imagine if you had 911 calls, oftentimes they're many, many blocks, sometimes a couple of football fields away from where that shooting's occurring. So we can get response there faster. We can also incorporate some of the other technology that you may be looking at, licensed plate reader technology that we're discussing, drones as first responders is a pretty hip new thing that a lot of agencies are utilizing. And then real-time crime centers, feeding that data to your partner and your neighboring jurisdictions in the region. We recognize if there's a gunfire event, it's not just going to be your agency that's going to be responding. I bring up the Incident Review Center because this is a very unique differentiator for our solution than others. Of the 16 million-plus gunshot detections that we heard, the sounds, bangs, booms, and pops throughout all of our customers last year, the machine suppressed 11 million of them. We're not here to overwhelm your 911 center, your officers and deputies in the field. Another 5 million, that IRC, that second step, they dismiss those as not gunfire. So we're significantly reducing false positive, false negative. And about roughly 300,000 were actually published. That's less than 5%. We're only going to publish those that we are very confident are gunfire. So what does this do? Well, as I mentioned, it's going to send it to your 911 center simultaneously. It's going to go to patrol officers in the field on their MBCs, as well as the mobile app. They're able to hear the gunfire on the laptop, and that does a number of key things for them. First of all, if you're using a real-time crime center, and there is one here in the county, they're sharing that information so they can see across all of the jurisdictions that have gunfire that are occurring. But it's also allowing the ability for fire and EMS to be aware that gunfire is occurring. Imagine if you're in ambulance, and you're responding to grandma who's having a heart attack. You may want to know whether a shooting scene's there, and you want to avoid that area. It's also allowing them to determine where they're going to stage until that scene is rendered safe. As I mentioned, it can be displayed, this is an example on the officer's phone in the field. It's also providing situational awareness. We just met with an agency last week. They polled their officers after using it for a year. And they said, what's good about it? And they said, we feel safer. We're not going to a disturbance call, unknown loud noise, maybe a bang or a pop. They're actually able to get there. They can provide first aid. They can be prepared when they get out of the vehicle to render care. And unfortunately, in the time that we live in these days, the realization that an active shooter may be out there shooting, they know how many rounds. They know whether it's full auto. Is it persistent and ongoing gunfire? The other thing that's important is it allows us to identify those crime scenes. And we have somebody who shows up at the hospital, and we don't know where they were shot. They're unwilling to cooperate. We can tie it back to the scene. We don't need to include them to identify who the shooter was. We can begin collecting evidence at the scene. How we also implement the ALPR technology that we're presenting to you is incorporating that and being able to scan the license plates as they're going through, in this case, a major intersection or thoroughfare. We provide that as a video and not just images for your investigators, and we provide some vehicle recognition technology around that. So sometimes plates are unreadable, sometimes plates are missing, sometimes we have inclement weather, and that's where Plate Ranger comes into play. So it's not just plate recognition, it's also the advanced vehicle recognition technology that exists. Oftentimes, as an officer in the field, as an investigator, we have some really good witnesses. They might only have a basic vehicle description. We may have the ability to have some license plate information, but as we feed that into LPR, it's going to provide real-time notifications to your detectives and investigators. Maybe it's an Amber Alert, maybe it's a missing person, maybe it's simply a stolen vehicle. It's also providing the search components that support the investigations to move forward quickly. And then, as I mentioned, the video recording with every read. You'd be surprised how many videos we see. There may be ongoing shooting between two vehicles and two drivers. We also may see that there's a vehicle speeding away at a high rate of speed from an incident. It's possible they may be involved, so it's helping us to narrow that information down. Some key things about that tool, as I mentioned, the vehicle make, model, and color, also the type and class, the ability to see that direction of travel, and the plate number and state of origin. One of the reasons that our solution is much more superior than other applications is some of the things I mentioned. We see plate covers, we see sharp angles, we see paper and vanity tags, which are sometimes hard to pick up. Our solution, in comparison, does much better than other applications there. And as I mentioned, it's that proactive capability. Amber Alerts, NCIC hits in wanted vehicles, localize what we call bolos, it's on-the lookout, APBs, if you may, as well as intel alerts. So if we're looking for a known gang member, if we're looking for somebody who may be dealing drugs, running firearms, we've got the ability to notify people, and that can be through an SMS alert to the appropriate law enforcement or obviously your investigative resources. And then we also provide with that included reports, which are going to look at things like interdiction. If we have a convoy, if we have a drive-by shooting, multiple vehicles, if we have a constant flow of drugs, and I'll use the property that you had up there previously, if we have certain vehicles that are going into that building on a regular basis, day and night, there's a good possibility they may be involved in illegal or illicit trade. The other thing there is the camera performance analysis. It's the ability, once the system is deployed, to determine, did we put it in the right area? Is it effective? And are we getting a good number of hits and a good traffic flow? Or do we maybe need to reconsider where we move that to? One other thing is, as we pair these technologies together, I mentioned precision. When we see a gunfire event occur, being able to take that gunfire event, not having to search across 30 or 40 different cameras and hours of video, but being very precise to a timeframe just before and just after, and in the immediate vicinity of where that shooting occurred. So again, making your investigators, your law enforcement agencies more precise and obviously more effective. One other thing, as I mentioned, the Crime Tracer solution here in the Southern California region, that database of over a billion CEGIS records from throughout the entire country, it's not just giving a notice that maybe a neighboring agency had a hit on that plate, so they drove through that area. This is allowing us to identify what their previous involvements were. Was it a gang stop? Was it maybe an armed robbery? Was it a traffic accident? So being able to understand previous involvement, pulling on those strings of association, and identifying the correct leads more quickly. Here's just an example of an investigative view of a vehicle driving by. We'll see that that happens to be the red car in the left lane that we pick up there. Another piece I'll point out for you, and this is a pretty big differentiator for us, and I think this is important for you and the law enforcement agency. We bring on a customer success director that works with your agency that gives initial onboarding, training, and go-live support. It's also going to help with the agency to identify your best practices and policy on how to best implement and be successful with ShotSpotter and the LPR system. We're also going to look at analytics, metrics, and KPIs. And the reason for that is, we're going to have some post-go-live checkpoints. There's going to be a point in time where crime will shift. Crime may be reduced. Crime may go up. You may get spillover from neighboring agencies. We can identify the ability to expand coverage, move coverage if need be at that point in time. And then one of the things that's very powerful for you is what we call DFR. If there is a major incident, an active shooter, an officer-involved shooting, we prepare a DFR, which is called a detailed forensic report. You see here, Washington DC utilized this. They prosecuted this individual through the federal government, using the US Attorney's Office. But with that, they give the ability to have that expert witness testimony and have our folks come in and provide that DFR report during that prosecution. Couple of other things that we provide through insight is delivering some regional situational awareness. We usually have an MOU amongst the neighboring agencies here within the county. We know that if there's a major shooting event, sometimes you will provide mutual aid and service. This gives that ability to see across jurisdiction where that may be happening. So here's an example, Hawaiian Gardens, not too far away. We can actually see those events where they may be occurring. We can also have a historical analysis and why this data and information is very good. It's understanding where the trends are occurring. This is an example over the last seven days. The ability to see by time of day, day of week, and also from a spatial analysis, where our trouble spots and locations are. What are our top problem addresses? And the reason I bring that up to all of your attention is that we prepare reports and analytics for agencies. If we have a number, in this example, of shootings within a mile radius or quarter-mile radius from a school, we can start to share that data with our other community partners, social services, our schools, our trauma centers. We can identify and assist where children may be impacted by persistent gunfire and get them the help that they need. As I mentioned, sharing that information, hospitals, community intervention, schools, we want that information to be accessible for them. It's not a one-stop, it's not a silver bullet. It's obviously a community and a village effort. Just some backdrop, some clinical research that was conducted. The Journal of Trauma and Acute Care said that the implementation of ShotSpotter, we saw an average of 3.5 minutes in reducing the time for EMS and police transport of shooting victims. There's the phrase, if you're not familiar with it. I'm also an active EMT in Maryland. Time is tissue. You may have heard of the golden hour. The less time that that person is on the street not receiving care, the more time we have to save their life. The other thing is that we also recognize less than 1% of the population is responsible for 2/3 of the shooting. We're not talking about putting a dragnet across the community. We're focusing and being hyper-precise on those bad actors and removing them from the equation. So I'll ask you this, why ShotSpotter? Why Sound Thinking? It's that difference of the Incident Review Center, that customer success component, the litigation support, and overall the community engagement. What we want to do is, we want to improve lifesaving opportunities. Just because you implement ShotSpotter, that doesn't mean we're going to save every life of every person shot. Sometimes the cards fall in a different way. But what it does allow is the ability for you to engage with the community. If we know about a shooting, we can arrive at the scene, we can be present and visible. We can recover ballistics and evidence. We can recover firearms. When that crime scene tape starts to drop, now our law enforcement officers have the ability to, we can knock on doors. And I can say, good evening, ma'am. Officer Algot, City of Bellflower. Were you aware there's a shooting out here? Is everybody in your house safe? Everybody okay? It gives us the opportunity to change that narrative from "we don't care" to "we're there." So I like to point out a number of things. It's detections, it's comprehensive response, it's identifying those serial shooters and bad actors. And the end game is to make your community safer. I want to share two stories, and then I'll be willing to take some questions from council members. Pueblo, Colorado, it's actually the agency that Rich came from. We recently interviewed the chief. I had the opportunity to meet with him at a national conference. They've implemented, it's been just a little over a year since they implemented ShotSpotter. Now, they're a little bit larger population-wise. The amount of crime and gun violence is significantly higher, unfortunately. But they've attributed directly 21 lives saved in their community over that timeframe. So just a little over a year, there was never a 911 call received. They've actually experienced over 471 gunfire events in 2025. That's pretty substantial.
That's a lot.
The biggest thing is that they've actually had 15 arrests in 2024 directly related to ShotSpotter. And then one other thing that I think is really important, Chief Nutigate, I had the pleasure of presenting with him at a conference in Virginia. They're seeing some amazing reductions in homicides and non-fatal shootings. But one of the interesting things about Virginia Beach is this, it's not up there in the slide. You may recall, about two years ago, Virginia Beach had a really bad shooting. I think there were about nine people that were shot, seven killed in a downtown area, a very touristy area. And the narrative quickly became. And the narrative quickly became, there's a shooting and gang and gun problem in Virginia Beach. And he said, Jamie, he said, "It's really funny, we were actually able to disprove that there were shootings because we never received any more alerts after that major incident." It's kind of an interesting takeaway, very unusual use. Obviously, they still had a lot of shootings in other areas of Virginia Beach, but they actually kind of were able to prove that that is a safe area. So with that, I, I usually share at the end and allow anybody in the room, feel free to scan the QR code that's up there, that'll take you out to the webpage, talk about our technology, how we embrace and work with your communities, and also talk about some of the other solutions and technologies which we aren't presenting here this evening. With that, Rich Reyes, I'd like to welcome him to come up and take any questions with myself, obviously from the distinguished council members. So thank you.
Thank you, very great presentation. Well done.
Thank you, Mayor.
Who wants to go first for questions?
Let's start on that end.
I didn't want to take all, I got questions.
Victor always has a question.
Well, hey, I, first of all, I appreciate that we're having this conversation. I, I, I think that this is obviously us trying to be proactive towards addressing some of our, our goals that we set as a council and that, you know, our staff set together. So thank you, Brian, for the work that you're doing on this, and, and really excited by the presentation. Look, I, I understand it's not going to fix everything, but information will help facilitate and, and help us be more proactive in, in, in reducing ideally, or just identifying and finding the hot zones and getting ahead of, of the, of the communication that we need to improve on, right? When we're addressing the community, when we're getting more information, whether it's real gunshots or not, because a lot of times that does happen, there's a lot of misinformation out there. But let me get to the questions, I guess. First off, without disclosing the locations that are already probably, in your opinion, Brian, locations where this would go, can you kind of give us a background as to how you will make the decisions to locate and place these locations?
Yes, Councilman Sanchez, so actually currently, we don't actually have the two square miles positioned out quite yet. What we, what the plan is, is we're going to work with the Sheriff's Department to grab historical gunshot-related calls for service and actual gunshot victim calls, pin that over a map over, probably we're going to go over a five-year time period, and then see where that lays, see where those locations are within the city, and then do our best to work with Sound Thinking to get the, the five-year hotspot areas covered with the, with the ShotSpotter sensors.
Okay, very good. And then correct us, correct me if I'm wrong, with the addition of the ALRs, ALPRs that we're adding in this go-around, we pretty much will have the entire city covered at some point of entry to any major arterial street, correct?
That is correct. So currently, just a quick backstory, so currently we have fifteen ALPR cameras already up in place. That's with a prior project we did about a year ago through Motorola and Vigilance System. Currently, we are in a pilot program with Sound Thinking and the Plate Ranger System with ten cameras. What is before you tonight will be for an additional thirty cameras in addition to the ten that we have with the Sound Thinking folks for a total of forty. So combining the two together, forty plus the fifteen would be fifty-five cameras in total.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. And then, with that said, I'm sure there's going to be residents that have privacy concerns. This question's more for the, sorry, I know Rich, but then I'm sorry, what was your name again?
Jamie.
Jamie, thank you. Can you educate us and the public as to how you handle and manage your data to ensure that there's no misuse of information, right? Because at the end of the day, we're going after the one percent bad actors that you talked about. But there are, you know, John Doe and, you know, neighbor resident who, who obviously care about privacy and, you know, and their privacy. Can you just kind of address how you handle your information, secure your information, and so forth?
Yeah, great, great question, Councilman. All of the information is stored in a SEGIS-approved cloud environment. So it is all in a governed environment, it is in the AWS government cloud. That technology is approved by the FBI for storage. The information, as I mentioned, the sensors that we have out there, they're actually placed high enough that the ambient conversation is insulated. It's specifically there to detect gunfire, and that's it. We maintain that information, it is controlled for log-on access by members of the city, obviously the Sheriff's Department, and that information is only for law enforcement use. The other piece of that, the ALPR component of it, there is a maximum timeframe that we can maintain that information unless there's an investigative need. Typically, it's ninety days, but we're also bound by local and state statutes, and those are often ever-evolving. We've seen it go down to as little as thirty days that we're maintaining that information. Some are getting a little more aggressive, Virginia just passed a bill, they're trying to shoot for fourteen days. We have the ability to throttle that. But once again, it's also an SEGIS government cloud environment, so it is totally secured.
Thank you, Jamie.
Did that answer your question?
It does, sir, thank you, appreciate it. And then I have a few more, Mr. Mayor, apologize. You talked about your partners and the partners in the community, certain, maybe school district, maybe local hospital. I don't think, we, we have a couple of non-urgent cares, but we don't have a, that would treat, you know, gunshot ones. But, but nonetheless, partners, so in this case, the school district, how would they gain access to this? And is that through a process, and this may be a question for Brian, or I guess staff, is there a process that they have to engage? We have to engage them to give them access? I'm assuming it's not a, you know, scan a QR code, sign up for a membership?
Yeah, fantastic question. Typically, it's going to be your law enforcement agency, in this case, the Sheriff's Office, who would be responsible here. They can schedule a report to deliver to that recipient. They don't get unfettered access, but we would schedule those reports, or that deputy would run the report, and then they would email it or send it and share it with that partner. So it is sort of a gated access, if that makes sense?
Perfect. And, and from your presentation, I gather that you have this already in Hawaiian Gardens? So you're already working with our, our current Lakewood station? So there must be a partnership, and I believe you're in Lakewood, too?
Correct.
If I'm not mistaken, okay. So they're obviously on board. The Lakewood station's on board with this support, and there's a partnership intact already.
That's correct.
Okay. Lastly, and I have more, but I'll leave it alone. You, there's, in your presentation, there's legal support. Is that an additional fee?
No.
So that's included already in your, in your package?
Yeah, it's, it's a hundred percent included, and that person right now who heads up that division is a former prosecutor from just up in the Bay Area. So she's, she's California native. Melissa's a fantastic resource, but that's all part of that included solution. Whether you use it in that year, or if you have some unfortunate incidents, it's always there for you.
All right, very good, thank you.
Yeah, one point about that, I, I think that's also important, and we've done this with some of the surrounding agencies, we'll also come down and train and help educate the prosecutors and the judicial system, and that's also part of that onboarding. If they're not familiar, it's new technology, and we need to make sure that they're well-educated on how to utilize it in a prosecution.
Thank you very much. I have other questions, but I'm sure others will ask it, so I'm going to leave it alone. Thank you, appreciate it, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I do have a question.
Sure.
On the plate readers, if there's no shots fired or anything like that, like just a basic crime. Lately, we've had street takeovers, where then robberies start occurring. Will that license plate reader be something that would, if they were in those areas? I mean, again, I know it's where they're placed. That could maybe help in those, those crime areas where now there's license plates that could be read from this incident happening to this incident?
Yeah, Councilmember, great, great question. Yes, the simple answer, you don't need to have ShotSpotter to utilize the LPR system. One other thing that we have, and we don't present it in, in such a high-level overview, we actually have a mobile app as well that's available for your law enforcement officers. And what that allows is, if there is a takeover event, we don't have LPR in that location, they have the ability to use that secured phone, and they can actually record the license plates of all the vehicles involved at that site. It's just another investigative tool taking that a step farther, but the, the short answer is yes. It's not just intended for use with ShotSpotter.
Okay, thank you.
And Councilmember Morris, I can answer a little bit more on that question. Obviously, as some of us are aware, we've had some recent street takeover events, which, which have caused some significant issues in our community. We've been lucky that the one location they have hit multiple times, we happen to have one of the Motorola cameras existing there. When we look at trying to deploy these additional forty other cameras, part of that is looking at intersections and covering all four directions to specifically address this issue of street racing and street takeovers. To my knowledge, we are the only city that I am aware of that is using this technology for that purpose. So we will continue to expand those efforts to make, in, in roads to hopefully combat those ongoing issues.
Especially once it turns into the robbing of the, of the businesses.
Correct.
As this is happening.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's my question.
Yeah.
No, this is very, very interesting, as we try to track down where these shots are coming from and then tie it into the license plate readers. And I'm even more enthusiastic about it if we're kind of, as we always are, Bellflower leads the way on some of the stuff that we need to get accomplished. But I'm excited to endorse what you're doing here, because I think it'll certainly help the situation that we find ourselves in, and I'm very impressed with it. So thank you for the presentation, and I think Victor's pretty well-covered most of the questions. No, that's fine, that's what we're.
He's more technical, he's more of a tech geek than us.
Well, and, and that goes with it, and, and maybe his district needs help as much as ours, you know?
Mayor, put him, go ahead, Sonny. Yeah, he's done.
Thank you, Jamie. First of all, I want, I really commend you for changing the name from ShotSpotter to Sound Thinking. That's a good, that's a good call. Anyway, in terms of the process, you mentioned that if a gunshot is, if a shot is fired, so it's captured. So can you tell me, how is the data transferred to the first responders, to 911?
Yeah, great question. So when that gunfire event occurs, we need to hit at least three sensors. When that happens, we're using cloud technology. That's going to our machine learning cloud, the IRC. We are then passing that through a secured web app from that GovCloud environment. And then it's going to a mobile app for your responders. I'd be happy to show this to you during a break if you'd like, but it is also.
So does it go directly to 911? Where does it go?
So we have an API. That API is sharing that very same information with the dispatch and the CAD system.
Okay, okay, all right.
But the way that we train, because sometimes that can take time for the round trip to CAD, gets queued up for the next priority call, we also send it directly to the officers in the field. And we actually encourage self-dispatch, so that now we can diminish that response time. And so that's exactly what we do.
I see.
And, and that's just part of the onboarding and the training. But the reality is, that's all done through APIs. The dispatch system that exists here in the county, I'm pretty sure we're already sharing information with CAD system here.
Okay, that's good.
So it's, it's kind of a known quantity as part of the project.
Okay. And you mentioned that earlier that you have also your clients, seat of Lakewood, Hawaiian Gardens. So I'm thinking that there's, there's a seat in between Hawaiian Gardens and Bellflower, so for example.
That's correct.
So let's say we sign up the contract with you, and there's a shot fired, let's say, one, one street over Bellflower to another city. So will ShotSpotter, will ShotSpotter spot that shot also?
Good question. As long as it's in a coverage area, so it's within the boundaries of what we define. One, we will recognize it. Now, we usually recommend agencies that are adjacent like this, and I'll give you a very good example. Washington DC also uses ShotSpotter. Secret Service and US Capitol Police have overlapping jurisdictions. They have an MOU agreement. Those boundaries are not necessarily a street, it's literally the sidewalk between the Capitol and what is Washington DC. So they do alert the adjacent agencies on purpose, because most often, they're going to assist each other. So we, we usually will have an executed MOU between those agencies, and that's a, a pretty nominal agreement.
Okay. So I'm assuming that when you talk about, let's say, two square miles, it's not really, the ShotSpotter range is not on a square piece, it's basically based on radius, right? Most likely?
It will be a polygon typically that we'll draw, but it doesn't need, it doesn't mean that it needs to be a square or an exact rectangle.
Right.
We see some really odd coverage areas depending on topography, streets, and things like that within your community. And, and then, one thing that I will point out, we guarantee within that coverage area. However, we overbuild that technology, the sensor array. If there's a major shooting, it may be outside the area, we may still catch it. Okay, it doesn't mean we publish it, but if we need it for investigative purposes, we give the tools to go back and research that, so.
So what I'm getting at here is, I'm assuming that this technology is going to be more spread to other cities also. So if that happens, everybody will benefit.
A hundred percent.
There's no gaps between cities, for example.
Correct.
So a lot of this will, more crimes can be, can be detected and caught right away.
That would be accurate, yes.
So, so I, I wish that you can sell this technology to others, to our neighboring cities. So it's going to be a win-win situation for all of us.
Agreed.
Okay.
Agreed.
All right, very good, thank you, Mayor.
The, the license plate reader cameras that we have, say, I think the number's fifteen plus. Do your cameras talk to, your system can take the data from any camera, anybody that makes it? Same technology? They, they integrate, I guess is the word, do they integrate in the system?
They, they can integrate. We also provide something that's a little unique, and that's the ability to, what we do is, it's called Bring Your Own Camera. We find agencies may have an older legacy camera that still meets the resolution requirements, but they decide to maybe pivot away from who the other provider was and bring that into the ecosystem for the Plate Ranger application.
Well, what I was getting at is, we have two companies right now, is that right? And then you're going to bring another, say, forty, I think, a thirty or forty cameras in. But they'll all, you'll be able to use all the, all the cameras.
Correct. We have some technology, it's, it's called a web hook, and it's the ability to securely connect to those other cameras.
But those, those cameras, the, like, the existing cameras don't have the AI part that your cameras does.
They, to my logic, they do not. If in doubt, if, if for whatever reason we're unable to get the two technologies to, to talk to each other, no matter what, the Sheriff's Department is able to utilize both. So that's, to me, the key point there, is Sheriff's Department has access to both camera systems and be able to utilize those.
Yeah, we're not throwing anything away yet.
Correct, no, no.
Build a system and then replace. And your cameras, are all these cameras that this, your, your system is, is there, is going to supply? Do those cameras have, they can pick the color of the car? That, that was amazing, that you said that.
They can during daytime.
Are they, do daytime, okay, yeah, that was my next question, do they do it at night?
Unfortunately, there's, there's no camera on the market right now that will guarantee at night. Once you switch over to IR, everything's pretty much black and white.
But the, the camera reading and, and with, with the AI that you, yeah, I guess it's AI, because that's the only way you can see the color of a car.
Yes, that's right.
It was amazing, I was just, it was just surprising. So in California, about a few years back, they started, instead of, you get this little sticker in the windshield for your new car, they actually give you a full-size paper plate. Are those readable?
The characters on that paper plate, essentially it's a temporary tag, yes, they are readable.
So they're readable, huh?
That's correct.
Got it.
I, I will say, in utilizing their, their, the pilot program we're involved with right now just was fully up and running about ten days ago. I was given a demonstration on their internal system, the backend work, and it was amazing of what these cameras that we had in town, what they're able to catch, the ability to, to search things, how it could pick off stickers on a window. It is amazing, and, and giving it to our deputies so far, they're, we're just starting to get over the hump of starting to use this stuff.
So more than just the color of a car, if it has a decal or a racing stripe on it.
You can actually take.
Or a dented fender?
Well, no, get ready for this, you can actually take a, say, for example, you have a victim of a crime, and they captured a photo of the car, not, not a license plate, just a photo of the car. You can take that photo of the car, upload it into their system, and the AI will then do a back search and find like vehicles that match that description.
In the past?
Yes, it was amazing to be when I saw it, so.
Whatever, however long you hold that data, thirty days?
I believe California's, we, thirty days to hold the data.
Yeah.
Details of the vehicle itself, not just, the license plate could not belong to the actual vehicle.
You're, you're absolutely correct. You're, unfortunately criminals become a little crafty, they'll swap plates. And if, you know, the plate comes back to a Dodge Ram pickup, and it's on a Nissan Sentra, we've got all that information.
Okay.
Yeah, we get, for the audience, we get a lot of reports of stolen cars in town for our license plate readers that we have up there already in use. And it's amazing how many reports we get, there's a pursuit because of this, you know, a felony, a felon in a stolen car. Imagine that.
Just had one two weeks ago.
Yeah, that's what I'm, anyway, you mentioned one thing like, uh, you know, the typical residential street with a lot of traffic come up with a residential house.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and I know everyone up here's got calls, I think that house on my street, they're selling drugs. And you, you, you breezed on it a little bit to, uh, about a system that can, you know, if you have a problem like that and, and there's a camera close by, you can, you can track that car that, you know, if it's that car that somebody's been complaining about. So, in my mind, and maybe it's not there yet, but it could, could, is it something that anybody thought of, a little mobile system, you know, when you have, have, uh, you know, you have a bunch of people complaining about a house or something, you have something that's in a truck or something, you can park somewhere and start capturing stuff, you know?
So, two answers.
Surveillance kind of a car.
Two, two answers to your, to your question and may we bring up a.
Did you understand what I was asking? It's something that's.
I, I, I'm gonna try to unpack it, we'll make sure I, I got your question.
Okay.
Um, th- there's really two answers to it. Number one, the system gives the ability to go back and look at that convoy or interdiction. If we constantly see this vehicle going past this camera every hour, well, it could be a construction vehicle, it could be Mary going back and forth to work, but if we're seeing it every day and it's coming at odd hours, so we can search and scale it down and say, from eleven at night till three in the morning, that, there's something to that, it's an investigative data point. But the other pieces and the, the BYOC to this, that Bring Your Own Camera, we find agencies that have clandestine cameras, they'll hide them in construction barrels, they'll put them in a vehicle, uh, that's parked there, maybe a van on the street, and what they're doing is they're basically acting as a Bring Your Own Camera, temporary setup, there's what's called a software agent that will deploy on that camera and they can use that, that camera. And it's essentially mobile, you're not gonna constantly move it around, but for a certain time period, you could utilize that.
Well, I can just think of our residential neighborhoods and we've all had those calls about a certain house here and there, that comes and goes, and you can't prove nothing.
Yeah.
But the cameras that we're here tonight are gonna be all in the major intersections. It's not gonna be on that block. And that car's never gonna get seen when it gets out on the busy roads.
And, and, and Mayor, to your point, it's, it's a data point, right? It's not, we're busting down people's doors because of that, it's giving us information that we can go do more investigative work and research and understand, okay, it is Mary going back and forth to work every day. Um, and eliminating that rather than throwing that drag net out there's, you may be thinking.
That's all my questions. Anybody else got any follow-up? I know, I know Victor does.
Two more questions, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the, uh, timeline for implementation was, uh, can you brief us on that briefly?
Uh, well, I, I guess I would say the, the pilot program went up pretty quick, um, working with Public Works to get the locations, uh, and the power requirements needed. So, I would say the Plate Ranger program, probably just a couple of months to have all of that done.
So, end of year?
End of year.
Too, too late?
I, I'd say sooner than end of year for the Plate Ranger program, so get the other, to get the additional thirty cameras up. Uh, the Shot Spotter may take a little bit more time because I think the power, power requirements and the location requires will be different. Um, and also, sound thingy has to acquire because some of these sensors may be going on private properties, so that the, uh, obtain the permissions of those private properties to get that, so that is a little more loftier of a goal, but I would say that, um, if not by end of year, then I would probably say slowly, probably slightly after the, end of year, so probably into twenty twenty-six.
Very good, thank you. And then, uh, I think the last question, I think, you know, one of our goals is communication and outreach and community, um, dissemination of information to the community. What, what is your, have you, have you processed what that's gonna look like in, as, as this is, you know, rolled out and then as it's active? How will yours department be communicating with the community and, um, improving communication on, on what we're doing here and what we're trying to accomplish and.
Exactly, um, I, I, I think there's, um, I'll admit, having given that too much thought, uh, but thinking it through briefly right now, I would say, um.
You don't have to answer it now, just planting the seed?
Then I'll hold off on that, let's, let's say plan to see on that, we'll see where that goes, but I, I do think the public should be aware of what we're, what strides we're making and the benefits we're making, and I don't like, want to oversell this at all, um, but I will say that I think what is before the council today and what is before the community today is quite possibly one of the biggest public safety related decisions in the last ten to fifteen years, uh, that this council's voting on. Um, so this kind of sets the stage of what we're looking to do and, and take this success and build upon it, and of course, our intent is to always make sure the community's aware of what we're trying to do and that our goal is to benefit overall public safety and reduce crime.
And Brian, if you don't mind me taking just a moment to add to your comments, um, we also have a dedicated community engagement group, which we don't mention in that, that presentation. Um, that includes Alfred Lores, uh, he is a former police chief out of Miami Gardens, uh, he was the deputy chief of Fort Lauderdale Police. He heads up that team to actually attend community events. Um, if you have a community night out, he'll bring some of his team members in to come in, educate them and assist Brian and you guys, just educating the community on what the technology is, how it works, answering and asking questions. Um, so we're fully supportive of that as well and that's included, there's no extra cost for that as well.
Thank you very much, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks.
Okay. Great presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
And, uh, I know our public safety director is really efficient because we just approved his budget July first and he's trying to spend the money we authorized for the swatch dog, right? And it's not even the fifteen, two weeks into the month. Government doesn't work this fast, ever, but thank you. You're showing me it can. Alright, what's your pleasure, guys?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute agreement file number one zero nine seven with Sound Thinking Inc. in a form approved by the city attorney.
Second motion?
Got a motion on the floor by council member Victor Sanchez and a second by Mayor Protim Sunny Santa Inez. Call roll, please.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Santinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Councilmember Morse?
Aye.
Mayor Dutton?
Aye. Now, we have the consent calendar. Okay. Any recusals or items pulled for discussion, gentlemen and ladies?
Mr. Mayor, I'll pull item fourteen C.
Okay, Victor. Fourteen C.
And I'll recuse myself from fourteen C, I have a conflict.
Oops, sorry.
I'm not looking at him anymore.
Okay.
And you gotta, and you're, you're crippled and he's gotta leave.
I'll be okay.
It, it, it's okay, I'll make, uh, comments, uh, it's just comments, there's nothing, I'll make it at my, during my council comments, it's fine.
Okay. So, you're not pulling it then?
I'm not gonna pull it.
Not pulling it, okay.
So, the, do I need to get out of the room?
No, you don't have to.
I will if you need to.
Okay, you're good, you're good.
I'm gonna scratch Victor off and then you refuse.
But I do have, I'd like to pull fourteen A.
Oh. Okay, I got you down, Mr. Coops.
Okay.
Anybody else? Okay. What you got with that warrant, registrar?
Well, I've got question, as I look at this, there's a lot of, either we had checks stolen, there's, your check when you went to Contract Cities, they gave you a check and then they reversed it and they replay it, and, and that happened with Wendy's check, there's a bunch of different accounts here that there are three or four entries in each one indicating we wrote a check, then we reversed the check and then wrote another check. And that's pretty consistent throughout this register. And my question is, did we get checks stolen? Did we write them the wrong amount? Why are we having to redo all these checks?
I think we're gonna find out.
Right. I'm sure this is not a mystery to you.
No, it's not. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council, we had a hiccup when we were printing the check, so that's why we had to reverse and we issued a check so that we can, uh, issue it correctly.
But almost half the checks in here have been dealt with in a reversal.
It's the same check run.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, I, I thought, you know, we've had issues with the post office and I thought, well, maybe they were stolen, we had to redo them, that's the way I was thinking.
From what I'm, from what I know, the checks are now being taken to, um, Lakewood.
Right.
Because of the recent issue and then we've also been contacted by the, um, postmaster to investigate on the, uh, checks that were, um, missing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, well, thank you, that answers my question, nothing specific, but.
Alright.
Just a general usage.
Yeah, it was just a printer hiccup.
And that's just gonna happen this month and you're good for the next.
Crossing my fingers, yep.
We're getting you all this new machinery, I thought it would work well for you. Yeah.
Not yet, we're not there yet, but yeah, it was just, it was just a printer hiccup.
Alright.
Yeah, printer failure.
Thank you.
Okay, suspect you're good with that.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Okay. Anybody wanna move the calendar then?
I'm making a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second. Motion for approval of the consent calendar by Mayor Protim Sunny Santa Inez and seconded by council member Coops without a, and that's, that includes him recusing on fourteen C.
Accusing fourteen, yes.
Um, without objection, that'll be the order. Alright. Right away here. Okay, council member reports, Mr. Sanchez, you wanna take it off first?
Uh, sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, you know, just very satisfied with today's meeting with what we've accomplished, not only with the, uh, Shot Spotter, but also with one of the items that we approved in the consent calendar. It's, uh, you know, now that I can, I think I can talk about it, uh, we're not voting on it, we've already done that. It's a, it's a right-of-way improvement, uh, capital improvement project over on, on Coke Street, um, towards the Rose and toward the end of our city limits. Um, it's towards an elementary school that's down there and I think, uh, just wanted to highlight that, that, that progress or that work is in progress now. Um, we approved this in our budget, so just wanna thank Public Works for getting this, uh, efficiently done in the first month of the budget. Though, thank you very much, Mr. Gurkey.
Starting the process.
Well, starting the process. I know, but you know, it's, hey, it's something. You know, it's something, okay?
I haven't seen anything out there yet, you make it sound like.
Starting the process, starting the process.
A lot of paperwork's been done.
Hey, gotta start the process, you know, to get it done, so I'll keep my eyes on it and, uh, you know, excited to, to see the process begin. Thank you.
Okay. Mayor Protim Santa Inez, you're up.
I'm up, okay. Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, last, uh, fourth of July, I attended the flag raising ceremony at the Church of Jesus Christ Latter Day Saints, um, as usual, it is well, it was well attended from the cities of Ortisia, Bellflower, Cervitos and Lakewood. And also last Saturday, we had a, um, a very successful community walk, thank you, thanks to the Parks and Rec Department and, and council member, uh, Morse was there too. And, uh, also, Assembly Member Jose Solache was in attendance, so it was well attended. I think we have about fifty walkers from the, from the city, Sheriff was there too. Uh, on a side note, uh, Mayor, I'd like to, uh, request that the city council meeting tonight, uh, be adjourned in memory of Dr. Darlene Marie Baliquette. Uh, Dr. Baliquette, um, was born on December tenth nineteen fifty-one in Bennington, Vermont, and passed away peacefully at home on July third twenty twenty-five at age seventy-three. Her family moved to California when she was an infant, where she was raised in the Catholic faith and nurtured a lifelong commitment to service, family and spirituality. Darlene began, began her professional career as a nurse and later became a chiropractor. She had found love and profound love for children and family, um, though she was unable to have more biological children after her daughter Amy. Uh, her heart has no such boundary, she and her husband Ted adopted their son Aaron. A woman of strength and a wavering integrity, Darlene dedicated her life to the service of others. She was also a longtime and active member of her parish community, that's St. Bernard's, where she took on leadership role, pound, founded the church food pantry and organized the annual Christmas program to ensure that no child went without a gift. She was preceded in that by her mother, Rita Baliquette, uh, father Edward Baliquette and brother Edward Eddie Baliquette Junior. She survived her husband, Dr. Ted Edmiston, children Amy, uh, married to, uh, husband Jesse and son Aaron, married to wife India and grandchildren Addison and Jackson. Darlene will be remembered for humility and wavering faith in many acts of kindness. Our different, different sympathies and heartfelt condolences go out to the Baliquette and, uh, Edmiston family. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Coops?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can't report on anything more than that my knee continues to heal, heal that I had replaced and, uh, it's been five weeks now, so I should be able to get back out in the public eye pretty quick here because, uh, it's not nearly as painful, but, uh, thank you very much.
I see you're driving.
Exactly, yeah.
Congratulations.
Luckily, it was my left leg that I worked on, although I still wouldn't be driving because I couldn't run the accelerator, but I'm good.
Okay. Councilmember Morse?
Just briefly, as Sunny said, we've attended the street fest, the movie night, uh, the community walk, we've had a lot of, um, great events from Parks and Recs have been putting on this summer and, uh, I've just really enjoyed being out there, uh, attending them, so that's all.
Alright. Thank you. I'd like to, uh, also adjourn in memory of Kay Minahan tonight and, uh, never knew, uh, Kay's middle name till now. Uh, I hope I can say it right, DePies? DePies, alright, I just pies. So Catherine Depa- DePies, no, Catherine DePies Minahan, fondly known as Kay, that's what I known as Kay as, was born on May second nineteen thirty-seven on a dairy farm in Wisconsin. She was the oldest of five children. And then in nineteen forty-eight, the family moved to Temple City here in California. Kay met Tom Minahan at a Catholic singles group. Scots in nineteen sixty-one. They got married in December fifteenth of nineteen sixty-two. Kay and Tom were married sixty-two years and were blessed with five children. She was very active as a member of St. Bernard's Catholic Community. She leaves behind a legacy of innovation and love, dedication. She is survived by her husband Tom, five children. Tom, which is, uh, known as Coach, uh, Ted, Tim, Terry and Tricia. Also has thirteen grandchildren and seven great-grandchildren. Our deepest sympathies and heartfelt condolences go out to the whole Minahan family. And with that, we're gonna, like I said, it, yes?
May I add something? May I add something?
Yes, you may.
Yeah, I just want to add that I was very fortunate to have known Kay and Tom and the whole family. And my wife and I were very blessed to have visited Kay many times. In her final days, we were there when she, when Senior Mike Myers gave her the blessing. And unfortunately, we were there visiting Kay the day before she passed away. So I just want to also mention that Kay is well-known in the St. Bernard's community. She's very active in the school, volunteering as a librarian. She is fondly known by the children as Miss Kay. So thank you so much for sharing Kay's life with us.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say something.
Yes, Mr. Coops?
So you can talk about Kay as such an active part of her church and the community and her family. And some of the best times that we had, and I'm going to date myself, back when we had Ken Cleveland and his wife Linda, and Ray Smith and Velma, and of course, my wife Judy and my, and me and Kay. And we all went together to out for dinner, usually two or three times a year. And we'd all meet and go, and we had just a great time. And Tom, you and I and Judy are all that's left of that crowd. But we, I cherish the relationships and learning about your family, and how every one of your kids came out a winner. And, and I know you were busy keeping that carpet business going, while Kay really had her hand on making sure that family went well. And I cherish that. I learned so much from her, talking about having a trunk in the house and had filled with all clothes and dresses and things, and the grandkids come over, they could play and dress up in different costumes. You know, little things like that, that you learn and you never forget. But you and Kay were a class couple, and it was a pleasure to have you as a friend and as a mentor. I learned so much from you about real estate and about business, and once you sell a business, don't go back and try to reopen it, because you'll never get it back, and little things like that. I just, you are the kind of people that make Bellflower better. And you've been here so many years, you bought that house over there on Repon that has been there, and as you're, you said you spent a fortune of, what, thirty-five thousand dollars on that house and thought you were doing the wrong thing. But I know your history of living in a garage over here in Compton, and you did good. And I just wanted to add a little more explanation to what Kay was about, so would people watch this on television and say that she meant a lot to all of us. And I know how much your family's here represented tonight, wanted to hear what we had to say. But she was a very, very special person, and, you know, you can't escape time. That's all I can tell you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coops. Okay. And with that, I'm going to call for adjournment in memory of Kay Minahan and Dr. Darlene Baliquette to the regular meeting of Bellflower City Council at five thirty PM, Monday, August eleventh, two thousand twenty-five. We are adjourned.